Uh, everyone to the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, December eleventh. I'll remind everyone that the meeting's being recorded. It'll be available for replay in the next couple of days. I'm going to start with attendance. Uh, Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Dave Hadfield.
Here.
Phil Pride.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Greg Demersion. Greg and uh, Kirsten Brown.
Here.
And my name's Tom Lucy and I am here. Uh, presuming Humphries, uh, board member Humphries is unavailable this evening, so. Uh, we're rolling with what we have here. And at this point, uh, Joe, if you could read the legal notice for the meeting, that'd be great.
Sure thing, Mr. Chip. Uh, consists with the governor's orders extending certain pavilions provisions of the open meeting law every effort we made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, two, one, five, six, six, two, three, two, zero, four, passcode, zero, one, eight, six, three, two. Please only use dial and or not our computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance, assistance, assistance free of charge. Upon request, if you are a person with a disability and require information on materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability quarter. William Renault Town Engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notifications will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One continued hearings to twenty five dash twenty-three, twenty-five dash twenty-four. Robert A. O'Neil Jr. Application for variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six, seeking a variance from the requirements of Article six. And Table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to an addition to be constructed onto the existing single family dwelling. Application for determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of nonconforming uses under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty-eight of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct in addition to onto the existing single family dwelling. The property is shown as map. Thirty-nine A Lot Posel T twenty-three of the assessors map is located at seventy Whittier Road, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. As is our custom, if we get uh, cases that are continued, I'll read those into the record. So, and the folks, if you're here for the cases I'm about to read. Um, you can know that they're not going to be heard tonight. First one, uh, be a letter from attorney Brian McGrail dated December tenth, twenty twenty-four regarding Seven Pittman Avenue, case numbers twenty-five, nineteen, twenty-five, twenty. Dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. And we are working on revisions to the plans. Please also let this letter confirm that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. So looking for a motion on continuance on that to the twenty-second with um, with an agreement to uh, that we can render file decision through February twenty-eighth.
Mr. Chair, I move that we uh, continue the matter at Seven Pittman Ave to our January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to hold a public hearing and render a decision until February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing seeing nonregional voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip. Chip, me on mute.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matters continued uh, to January twenty-second. Second item case, uh, twenty-five eleven at thirty-five Stark Ave. Via letter from attorney Brian McGrail, dear Mr. Chair, please continue this matter until your meeting on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and I continue to work with the building inspector in an effort to address the matter stated in his letter. I'm happy to report the matter's been resolved with the Conservation Commission. Please let this letter confirm the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and or file any decisions until and including February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at thirty-five Stark Ave to January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five uh, meeting and accept the applicant's request to um, extend the time for the board to hold public hearing and render a decision until February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing seeing nonregional voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matters continued to January. All right, on to continued hearing. First up, case twenty-four, ten. Um, one nineteen Nahant Street. I thought I saw Mr. Panos on the screen somewhere earlier. Mr. Panos.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Jason Panos, representing the applicant to residences at Nahant LLC. I'm joined by uh, Scott Cameron. Uh, we have nothing new to present tonight. Uh, and after uh, discussion with the applicant, uh, they have instructed not to grant any further continuances of this matter.
Okay. Uh, I saw that you requested to go to the TAC, that you've changed your mind since you've made that request.
Uh, the applicant has since, yes, uh, changed its mind. Changed their mind, pardon me.
Okay. With that, board members, we don't have another meeting before this. Um, pouring it up, open to discussion. I think we should uh, my suggestion would be we vote to close the public meeting, ending the one hundred and eighty day period. That would grant us forty days to make a decision. And then we'd have uh, fourteen days after that to uh, file the decision. We have a uh, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January eighth, that would fit within the forty day period that we have if we voted to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Scott Cameron's trying to come in and I guess he's not being let in. Uh, I apologize for interrupting, but.
No, no. Yeah. There's been an extra, yeah, there was an extra, you know, I don't have to allow people in. He should be allowed right in here. There's no tool that I have that prevents people from coming in or allows me to.
Interesting. I, I was definitely moderated when I signed in and I had to wait some time and I had to log into my email and then log in that way.
Yeah, if you can send him a note, first thing, when, when you go to log in, you have to hit, check the thing that I am not a robot. Once you do that, you will be registered with the town. The town will send you an email. In that email, there's a join meeting button. He can enter that way. If you can relay that information to him, he should be able to get into the meeting.
I'm trying to do that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. Um, I'm sure he wants to hear. So, back to continue my thought, since we do not have another meeting scheduled, we need to close the public hearing, so there is not presumptive approval. By closing the public hearing, we're giving ourselves under the statute that we have forty days to render decision. Our January eighth meeting falls within that forty days. We could make a decision at that meeting. Following that meeting, we either have to have a special meeting so that we could make our final decision within the forty days. Um, and then after we make our final decision, we have fourteen days to file that decision.
Mr. Chair, I just want to be clear. I, I, I thought it was forty days from the close of the public hearing to render a decision and file with the town clerk. So all of that, I think, has to happen within forty days unless I'm mistaken. We should be clear on that.
I think you are, Dave.
Okay, so that would all have to, so we'd have to meet in January. If we did close tonight, that starts that forty day clock.
That's the important one, right?
And then seven, fourteen, twenty-one, the meeting on the eighth is twenty-eight days. However, we're counting, if we're counting business days or calendar days, uh, um, but that puts us.
Mr. Chair, the chair has probably done the math.
No, I just, I, I just want to be clear so we, we know what the process is going forward, that we'd have to meet on that date and render a decision and then turn around and get it filed within a few days after that meeting, really.
Two weeks out, we have fourteen days.
Mr. Chairman, once, once we close the public hearing, can we then talk about what the next step should be?
Well, we close the public hearing, we're, we're done receiving new information.
Correct. I think we should close the public hearing. But I'm ready to vote tonight unless you don't want to do that.
I'd like to vote tonight, too.
I'm nervous that from January eighth, something happens or something. Um, it's totally up to you. I'm just saying.
I, I, the, the statute and the, the regulations give us the time. I think we should take the time.
Okay.
They've afforded us that time.
Your call, your call.
I agree with that, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, there won't be any more public, i- if we close it tonight, there's no more public discussion.
There's no public discussion. There's no input from town boards or committees. There's no.
No one, no, no new information. So why don't we just vote on what we got?
I, I want, I want the time, Mickey.
Okay, I.
Mr. Chair, I think we should, I think we should take the time. Let's, give them the forty days. Let's take our time. They vote on it in forty days for our, our next meeting.
Mickey, we vote, if we vote tonight, we've got fourteen days in the middle of the holidays to pull this decision together.
Ah, okay. Nope, that's even a better reason to wait. Okay, I got you now.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Okay, mister, um, I think you heard where we're going, Mr. Panos. You've been clear on that. Um,
Yes.
If, uh, Mr. Cameron, I know you uh, had trouble uh, getting on the call. If here's, here's your last chance before we make, we take action.
Oh, I'm here. Uh, please proceed.
Okay. Are folks at the board comfortable with that? And uh, if so, I'll be looking for a motion to close the public hearing tonight.
It sounds like there is general agreement and I'm prepared to move, Mr. Chair, that we close the public hearing on the matter before us at the residences at Nahant.
Seconded. Seconded.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing related to the comprehensive permit application at the stated address. Uh, is there any further comments or questions from board members? Hearing seeing none. Dave.
Yes.
Hold on one second. Gail. Can I call you up?
Yes.
I'm pulling the file up now. I just want to make sure we've got the right voting members.
Yep, I have a slip of paper on the attendance sheet.
Uh, Dave, Chip, Joe, Tom, Mickey. Cause Sumi would have been eligible tonight. Okay, so it is regular voting members. Okay. Just uh, belt and suspenders here. All right, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Public hearing is closed on that matter. Uh, so, Mr. Panos, uh, you can expect us to take this up again on a meeting scheduled for January eighth. If there's any change in that and we call a special meeting or anything, I'll certainly be in touch on that.
Great, and that'll be your working discussion meeting?
It will be.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next matter, thirty-two Nahant Street LLC. Mr. Haverty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Wasn't anticipating you getting to me so quickly.
No, I'm pretty happy about it, though.
Uh, so I have with me here tonight, um, Chris Barages, uh, project civil engineer, uh, and Andrew Jones, the project architect. Unfortunately, uh, the traffic engineer Scott Thornton wasn't able to be here. But it doesn't sound like there would be much to talk about with regard to the traffic anyways, given the fact that the T E C has not provided a memo. Um, but Chris, I think, can go over the revised plans that we submitted, um, that changed the location of the building and, and moved the location of the driveway as previously discussed.
Sure. Good evening, uh, members of the running Board of Appeals. For the record, Chris Sparages from the Engineering and Survey Office of Williams and Sparages. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, I'll just share my screen, uh, Mr. Chairman, and ju- just run through the uh, the plan changes, which um, you'll find remarkable but simple.
What do you still?
Okay, so on the, on the screen before you is our layout plan and and so the way the, the plan changed is that um, we essentially mirrored the site. So, uh, if you recall previously, the entrance to our project was on the left-hand side or the west side of the property. And by moving and essentially flipping the building uh, from the right side over to the left, by flipping the entrance from the left side to the right, we've taken our entrance and moved it uh, that much further uh, from the intersection of Main Street and the haunt, uh, allowing us to have some, some additional queuing spaces across the frontage of the property. Um, everything, all of the other elements of the plan are the same, but they're just mirrored and I'll just walk, walk through them real quick. So one would enter the site on the right-hand side here into the parking field. Um, the building is uh, is on the left as you're coming in. Uh, it is a three-story, twenty-two unit uh, building. Uh, the number of parking spaces that we've laid out here in this L pattern is thirty-eight. Uh, two of the spaces have been designated as delivery spaces. They're back here in the back right corner. Uh, so UPS truck or other delivery truck, you know, can easily uh, come in and maneuver into one of these two spaces and easily, easily come out. Uh, so they're uh, nice and easy to back into for um, for those smaller trucks. Uh, we've also designated uh, three visitor parking spaces that are shaded in the back. Uh, the dumpster corral area for municipal solid waste and recycling is um, straightaway, um, which is also convenient for the, the trash truck when they come to pick up uh, these containers. It's a simple drive-in, uh, back, out, turn and go. Uh, just to refresh your memory, uh, the transformer pad uh, for the site that we worked out with Wakefield gas and light uh, was relocated. Um, this time it's in the back right corner as opposed to the back left corner. And then in the back of the building, you may recall, uh, one of the interesting elements of, of this design is that uh, there is a section of the building here in the back, this rectangle here, that's a twenty-one feet deep. Um, and it all comes across most of the way of the building here. Uh, this is a overhang. And so on the ground level, it's open to the air. And then it has uh, two stories above. And so you can see that there are a few parking spaces, including the two accessible parking spaces are undercover, as is the wheelchair ramp access and a couple of these parking spaces here. Uh, and the newest element of the plan uh, that we incorporated is to, is to create a, an outdoor uh, space for residents. It, it includes an area that's undercover under the overhang that I just described. Uh, that open space area under here measures about twenty-one feet by eighteen feet, so just about three hundred and seventy-four square feet. So folks can come out of the building, uh, out of uh, one of our access doors back here and walk over to the space. Um, there's a half wall uh, here and uh, this would be a sort of a gathering spot. And then with a walkway that comes out to a very large um, outdoor fire pit area. Uh, that's uh, well landscaped of, that's a flip over to the landscaping plan. You'll see that we have um, landscaping proposed and and even some additional tree plantings um, across the back here. Uh, hoping that we can also uh, be allowed to plant a couple of uh, trees on the town-owned property of it. This is all town-owned property in the back. Uh, the outdoor space outside under the sky here in this back corner measures approximately seventeen hundred square feet. Uh, so that's seventeen hundred plus another three seventy-five under the building. The other thing, uh, working with uh, Phoenix Architects, uh, with uh, Peter and Andrew, uh, we identified a way to create some additional outdoor space for the folks that live in the three units on the, now the left-hand side of the building. So you'll see that there are a couple of proposed outdoor patio spaces, six by eight at these three locations. And they're sep- separated or divided, if you will, visually by uh, some uh, dark American green arboridie that are shown on the landscaping plan. Uh, so that's a, that's a new element uh, as well. It allows people to have a slider off the side of the building to come out and sit outside if they'd like. Uh, other elements that are the same as before is we have a perimeter, a, a fence that shields us from, from the neighbor to the left here. It's a six-foot high privacy fence, opaque. On the other side, similar uh, type fence along the entire side. Uh, interestingly enough, because all we've done is mirrored the site and our site is relatively flat, the grading program and the stormwater management program is identical. It's just flipped. So instead of our low point uh, being on the left side, our low point from a drainage standpoint is on the right-hand side. Uh, we still have the same size stormwater management area in the back, all underground. Uh, taking the benefit of the very good soils on the site, mostly sands and gravels. Uh, again, a reminder that we have the groundwater surface is, is pretty far below the ground surface at eight and a half to ten feet below the surface. So uh, great soils and we're infiltrating all of our impervious surfaces in the parking area as well as the roof area. All, is all being directed back into this area here. Um, our landscaping plan, again, we beefed it up a few iterations ago, uh, to include more dense plantings of shrubs and trees. Uh, and then also added um, some additional uh, plantings um, in the back here. Two of the trees or almost three of them end up on town-owned property and hopefully that, that would be okay. Uh, these are those, our dark American green arboridie in between the outdoor spaces of the residence here. Uh, and then uh, some additional uh, tree and shrub plantings all around the perimeter. So, uh, the main purpose of this was to address concerns that came up um, at the TAC relative to uh, queue lengths on Nahant Street. Uh, this allowed us to, to pick up at least three uh, uh, additional car lengths here across the frontage uh, by moving the driveway entrance to this location. Uh, so with that, I'll end my formal presentation, Mr. Chairman, but uh, we're all here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Members of board, questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, that this is exactly what we discussed. Um, they flipped it. They did what they said they were gonna do and this is what it is. I, I think we're back to waiting for TAC now.
I was just gonna echo that, Mr. Chair. Again, appreciate the, their efforts to get some open space here, which we uh, requested um, many times. So I appreciate their efforts to do that. The parking is sufficient. Um, I like the idea that they've added patios. I mean, that's a nice little addition for those residents. So I mean, again, it's, it's, you know, um, it's, it's responsive to what we've talked about and some of the public feedback as well. But uh, again, same, same as Chip. We get to hear back from TAC and, and uh, see where things go from there.
I mean, I still think it's too large, too many units for Nahant and I'll be curious to see whether TAC thinks it's safe or not. Um, I don't think it really fits into the neighborhood. Thirty-two units and a road that has made mostly single family and double fam- two-family homes. Uh, tough to, tough to put up really the size in to make it fit in. So I still have those concerns, but uh, they really haven't changed much.
You meant to say twenty-two, right? It was thirty-two.
Correct.
Yeah.
I didn't say that because I couldn't remember what we got to.
Yeah.
Mr. Sparages is, you know, you, you, you described the stormwater program and have you had any discussions with the Wakefield DPW regarding this, this new configuration on the site?
Uh, not the, not the new configuration. Um, the plans were shared with, with the, with the zoning board of appeals, but uh, the stormwater design didn't change. The stormwater report didn't have to change. Um, so we, we did go back and forth with DPW with some concerns and questions they had, which we addressed in writing. Um, so um, so there really isn't, in my opinion, there isn't anything to talk about. Um, it's the same design.
No, I appreciate your opinion, but we generally take the opinion of our subject matter experts that work for the town. So, um.
Well, Mr. Chair, to that point, real quick, I, I would suggest that Chris, if you wouldn't mind reaching out and just letting them know, here's the latest plan, just so you can see, we flipped the site, we did this, it's basically the same. And just get their either yea or nay. Either they're fine with it or they're not, and they have some additional questions, I think.
All right.
Mr. Chair's point, let's just close the loop on that so they can see the latest ones. And they're not surprised when they see something that gets flipped after the fact, hey, what happened? Why didn't we know about this? So.
Uh, to that point, to that point, Chris, I, the question, did you guys do soil samples in that area where you're changing it too? I'm assuming you did soil samples everywhere, but.
Yeah, so because the site, the site, um,
Oh, it's, it's.
It literally flipped it. It didn't actually move.
Okay, I was thinking it was what, okay.
Yeah, this is where it was before and, and it literally, i- if it moved five feet, that's a lot. And so it's still, it's still um, over the area that we tested, if you will.
Yeah, in my, in my head, I just thought it, it flipped left to right. I didn't realize it was in the back hall to begin with, so that's fine.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I would add this, um, as it relates to the TAC for board members. Uh, at the end of the, this, at the end of November, I wrote Lieutenant Anderson, following their, their meeting, um, their November meeting. I asked Lieutenant Anderson if uh, TAC was gonna have any amendments to the previous memos from, that they put out or any other feedback for the ZBA based on the November meeting. Uh, Lieutenant Anderson responded, uh, good morning, Mr. Lucy. The TAC was shown preliminary plans that were not fully developed yet. No hard numbers, et cetera. We do not have any updates to our previous memos to provide your board at this time. Is there a plan to go back to TAC with those numbers that they're seeking, Mr. Haverty?
C did not request any additional numbers from us. We did meet with them on November fifteenth. Um, they reviewed this particular um, proposed change. Their conclusion was that they liked it better than the prior um, iteration, but that they continued to have concerns based upon the location of the property and not really any concerns regarding the actual layout of the proposed development. I, I don't see any need for any additional feedback from the TAC, given, you know, that conclusion. They, they, they didn't ask us for any additional information. I thought they were going to provide um, an updated memorandum to the board, but apparently they've chosen not to.
Okay, so board members, what we have from them stands for their position on uh, the project and we've gone over that um, uh, as well.
So, Mr. Chair, why does, why did Mr. Anderson, Lieutenant Anderson think that the plans that they reviewed on that November hearing were preliminary? I'm curious about that.
I can't speak.
Was there the nature? I wasn't at the meeting. I just.
This is a chapter forty B development. All of the plans are preliminary. I mean, you, you're not getting final design plans until after the board issues a decision. And, you know, we go in, we've, you know, fully develop the, the plans. So, I mean, I presume that's what he's discussing.
I also presume that flipping the building in the driveway didn't change their position.
Uh, uh, again, they, their, their contention was that they, they liked that design better than the previous iteration, but they continued to have concerns regarding the, the location. Uh, I would point out that currently there are two separate houses on this property with two separate driveways. So in, in the, the trip generation uh, difference between the, the existing three units and the proposed twenty-two units on a per peak hour basis is not really significantly different. Um, and reducing the two driveways for down to one driveway is gonna actually provide a safety benefit. So I, I don't really see any special concerns relating to, to traffic from this project.
Well, obviously the T A C disagrees and um.
Right.
And they've made that clear. So, um. With that, so now we're at a point where we're similar to the last case. Is there anything else you, you're willing to, you're gonna present? You're not going back to T A C or, uh, I don't know if you're going back to feel like you've done what you're gonna do with the D P W would be good to know that.
Lying upon Chris is, I don't know that there's any benefit to going back to the D P W for such a minor change as it relates to the stormwater. Um, as relating to T A C, again, you know, we came back to them, we met with them, they um. Said what they said, they weren't asking us to come back and provide them anything, any additional information. So I don't really see where there would be a benefit to that. But again, I'll rely on Chris in terms of the D P W.
Yeah, again, regarding the site, you know, impervious surfaces are the same. Uh, we're collecting all of the hardscapes into the same. The same stormwater management system that didn't, it didn't change in size. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's the same, same system that we had designed before. It's just, um, it's just mirrored.
Give me the opportunity, because if that's the case, we'll kind of right where we were with the last case that we just talked about. Um, cause if you.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is we've worked very diligently with this board to address its concerns. I, I understand that there may be outstanding concerns relating to the size of the development. Um, we've moved as far as we can on that issue. And the board, I think, needs to keep in mind just how far we came. And just what it would be risking if we're required to take an appeal to the housing appeals committee. And we wind up going back to the original thirty-two unit design. I, I don't think that that really is in the best interest of the board, the town, the neighborhood. Um, but you know, that's where we will have to be if we wind up having to take an appeal.
Yep, that, I think everybody here understands that. Um, okay. So I'm just trying to get to a point, if, if you're not gonna have any further information. It sounds like the town isn't gonna have any further information, then we should probably move to close the hearing. As the applicant, I'm giving the opportunity.
Yep. We, we do not have any additional information to present.
Okay. I don't want it to be said that we didn't give you a chance.
Understood, thank you.
All right, board, same deal. Um. This is our last meeting. They have the same extension date of the thirty-first. Uh, the plan, I think, would be just the same. We close the hundred and eighty day public hearing tonight. We have forty days after we vote to do that. Plan to take up some, uh, deliberate on the matter uh, for the board, no public comment, no new information. It's just the board deliberating. And that date would be January eighth. At least that's the plan for now unless, you know, I'll, I'll think about it, but. I think we need a special meeting, you know, uh. I'll pull the board for availability. Uh, but uh, I think I'd rather stick with the January eighth meeting that we have on the books. Uh, I'd just be prepared for a long night deliberating on both these matters. Um. If that changes, uh, if we take this vote, Mr. Haverdy, obviously it'll be in touch. Any comments, questions from the board?
No further comments, Mr. Chair, I think. We are where we are.
Okay, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing for the comprehensive permit application at thirty-two Nahon Street.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded. Let me just double check here too. I'm pretty sure it's the same building members, but um.
That's what I have in my notes, I'm sure, but I trust Gail.
Gail's the best, I trust Gail more than mine. So it is same regular voting members. With that, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes. Public uh, hearing is closed, so we'll see you on January for deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yep, thank you. Right, next matter, thirty-three West Water Street LLC.
Mr. Chair, point of order, if I may, as I mentioned you earlier, I'm gonna step away at this point.
Yep, sorry, I forgot that, Dave. I, I appreciate you hanging in for the forty Bs.
I wanted to hang on for those, but the rest, I, I think we've got coverage. Um, so appreciate everyone's. Time. We'll have a good night, folks. We'll talk to you soon.
Happy holidays, Dave.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Okay, with that, uh, Mr. McGrath, I think, believe this is your case.
It is. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record attorney Brian McGrath, representing the applicant thirty-three West Water Street LLC. Uh, with me tonight, uh, is um, Steve DeFuria from, um, is it Steve or Andrew?
Oh, it's Andrew.
It is Andrew. I get confused with you guys, a different project. So Andrew's here tonight, Andrew Jones from uh, Phoenix Architects and also. Um, Marvin St. Jean and Immaculate Dennis, who were part of the ownership group. Um, John Olger is not here because we didn't see any need for Site Civil. Uh, where we stand on this, to refresh the board's memory. Um, we, the board asked us to do um, some design on the openings for the garage on the first level, which Andrew has worked on since the last meeting. Um, Hayes Engineering is um, in the process of um, getting, um, hopefully getting final sign off from the engineering department. Based on our change in the parking lot where we shifted the building uh, to make sure that the uh, D P W uh, is aware of that move. And that they're signing off on the final plan uh, is, is modified. Um, and I continue to work on um, draft findings and conditions, which are not complete yet, as the board had requested. So with that said, that's kind of an update, and I think the main focus tonight would be, would be the architectural aspect with. Uh, addressing the openings uh, in the garage that were of concern to the board. Uh, so if I may, I'd like to hand it over to Andrew to, to take over the screen to uh, show the board how he uh, proposes to handle that matter.
Great, thank you, please do.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. Um, let me see. I can't see where to share the screen. Oh, it just popped up. Give me one moment here. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So as Brian mentioned, the biggest adjustment was uh, the screening on the parking garage before it was open. Um, with the brick pillars kind of coming up and holding up as if they were stilts. What we're doing here now is we're carving openings, what, with a wire mesh screen, um, six feet wide by five foot high. Um, and also bringing the siding down. So this is definitely makes it feel more cohesive, makes the building feel more full. And not just kind of floating in air. Uh. This is, you know, an updated street, street scape graphic. Uh. We also showed a rear elevation showing the screening. Um, so you can see here, one, two, three, four, five openings within the parking garage. Bear with me, my computer's being slow. So this just shows the context study that we had looked at one time and shown the old and new. So from the side of the garage. Um, you'll see the new screens where as opposed to where there's just cut openings. This was the context study, nothing changed there. Um, this is the first floor, so minor adjustments, one just being an interior thing Kazumi mentioned with the bathroom that was uh, fixed. We also reduced the amount of lights in the parking garage down to four. I'll go over that later on, but um. These lights have a radius of roughly twenty feet, twenty-two feet. So four of them all uh, placed in this strategic spot. Allows for lighting without going uh, past the building itself, just staying in the parking garage. Nothing changed on the floor plans. Nothing changed. Well, the elevations, the only things, these openings. We also added siding, so it's more understandable. I know that was a uh, little bit of confusion last time. And then as you can see, what we're calling out here, which is the six by five perforated, perforated custom metal mesh screen. Um, we'd like to powder coat it in the bronze to match the marvin windows that we're calling out, um, just to give it a cohesive look. Um, and then ju- this is a materials list, which it stays the same. If you want, I can pull up.
Doesn't look like you put the screen on the materials list.
Say that again?
It doesn't look like you added the screen to the material list.
So that it, it being custom, it's one of those things that it's, you know, not uh, called out product. But what I was actually gonna go over is we did find one product that is very similar. So if we wanted to go the route of, you know, not custom and. Um, you know, pre ma- pre manufactured, I was gonna pull that up right now and just show you um, what would be and what would look like. That's okay with the board?
I mean, I don't think they need to be custom. I think that's a.
Okay, let me pull. Yeah, let me pull up then what uh, I have to show. Can you guys see?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, so it's just a typical um, metal wire machine. It's actually used uh, typically for like guarding off. Um, either like electrical panels or areas within a building that um. Should be guarded off from public, but you can get them in custom sizes. Um, they come in black, so.
And then you would, you would powder coat that, the, the. You'd have that powder coated to match your windows, right?
Exactly. We'd reach out to the company and see if it's available that they could do prior, but if not, then we'd send it off to be custom powder coated.
U, U line's not gonna do it for you, I can guarantee you that.
I'm sure you're right, you're right with that one. But not, not a big issue one way or another.
I, I think from a design perspective, you're pulling the siding down, adding these screens. Adds a lot to the building, actually. The only thing I would then have you do is look at the landscaping. And maybe have some more height up against the building to even. Give that, so that these become less of an issue. You've got some aprovidies, but you got aprovidies put in a position where they don't even touch the screen. Maybe you can look at the landscaping and there could be a couple taller things to. Help, to help with the base of the building. There's something to look at. Where you, you know, it's not where you have to come back anyway. Because of engineering and because of everything else that Brian's still working on. I think it's worth taking another look at the landscaping in the front.
We can do that.
You know, something creative, Brian.
Yep.
For the fencing, we talked about something unique, right? A, a different look, a, a wooden look or a.
Yeah, we had that.
A white vinyl. I think you gave us a few options, right?
We did, um. Let's see if I can bring that back up.
Cause that should be on the material sheet as well.
It's on the landscape plan, but I'm gonna refresh the board's memory on that, Andrew, take the screen.
And did we pick one?
No.
You pick one?
Nope.
So I think one should be picked.
Can you see this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So these were. There were three options.
I mean, my opinion would be option two is too contemporary for the building. Option one or three would be, would be fine. Uh, for me, they're a little bit more traditional, which the building. With the steeple and everything else is kind of leaning towards. Uh, I like option one myself, but I'd love to hear what other board members think.
I like option one in that it um. Lets a little more light in at the top of the, are they the same general height?
Yep.
Yeah.
But to have an extra foot of light at the top, it gets you the privacy, but gets you a little more. Lightens it up a little bit. So I like number one.
The, yeah. I'm fine with, with that as well. So Brian, are we saving those trees along the edge here or trying?
Yes, yep, we are.
Is there any concern about where you're placing the fence, right in the root lines there too?
No, the fences, the, the fences on the other side, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, then we don't have to worry about the root line.
No, the fence is going over here.
Although, although you are right, Mr. Chair. In that, in our operations plan or in our demo plan, those trees and roots need to be protected.
Yeah.
So that, you know, they don't get just driven over, damaged. And the tree, you know, you don't even know when it's been damaged until five years from now when the trees die. So that will have to be part of the, part of the landscape plan is that protection.
Or. Yeah, we'll have Jim Emanuel spec that, Chip, for the O and M.
Yeah, write something up for the protection. You know, good news is you have no foundations going there now.
Correct.
So that's, that's a good thing. You're, you're doing really basically just surface work.
So we can, we can, we're gonna look at the landscape plan upfront anyways, and we can spec fence option one.
And I'm looking on this plan, Brian, I just see the words proposed curb. I'm assuming that meant proposed granite curb.
This is, um, I have to go to the site plan. Let me see what, what John has there. Hang on a second.
John should know.
Yeah.
Done enough of these.
See. Wonder if he has to, um. It's part of his finalization, Chip, he might be working.
Might be.
I'm just going back historically here to see.
Uh, I think you may have to remind him of the wording.
Here's, here's what he, let's see what he, cause this goes back to the original. Which might not have had it, Chip, let me see. He just, let's see. I'm gonna bring it up. You, you might see it better than me. No, proposed curb.
Just keeps calling proposed curb, so.
Yep.
I think he just missed, mistyped.
Understand. It's ready, any spec transits proposed curb. Okay, I'll talk to.
And then for materials, we'll need to know what the materials on the patios are. And the materials of the walkways. I don't think those were specked out yet.
Okay.
And then as you work on your, Brian, on your O and F, just how are those lights in the drop, in the garage gonna be mopped? Be uh, you know, are they motion sensors? How are they, how are they activated? So they're not on all the time.
Got it.
And how long do they stay on once they've been activated?
Yep, as long as I have you on this, um, you just take a peek at the landscape plan to see if there's anything upfront that definitely needs to be adjusted.
Well, just what I just talked to Andrew about, which was now that we're doing screening and kind of a different feel out front.
Yeah.
Have James look at, you know, can we get some height in there that in a year or two might help.
Got it.
soften that screening.
We'll have Jim Emanuel look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But where you're coming back, I'd take another look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other comments from other board members, questions?
Hey, guys, feel free to jump in, the water's warm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, so let's jump in now, cause I'd like to, this one, we're, I think, we're close, so. Let's wrap it up. Um. So, speak now.
Yeah.
I think it's lovely. Um, are all the materials at the building department? They don't, I haven't even gone down and checked, but they, are they down there or no?
No, but we can start putting them together, get them down there.
Sure.
We'll do that and let you know when they do.
Thank you.
Brian, do you think we need to do a mock-up panel on this? I think there's probably enough detail here that we, we're gonna need something on this. I think there's probably enough detail here that we, we're gonna need something on this.
Yeah, I mean, you always have, so, you know, I mean, I think it's more of a question for Andrew, um.
You're asking the wrong person.
You're asking the wrong guy, I mean.
Yeah, what are your thoughts?
You know, it's.
Say no too.
Eh, well, it's tough just cause it's obviously eleven unit compared to like a forty unit plus building. But I think it would be nice to at least mock something up out there. I don't know if it needs to be the. You know, a massive, massive one, but at least enough to show, you know, how the siding meets the brick and um.
So I think, I think more than anything else, Andrew, it's the color of the siding, the brick, the transmission between the two. The screening for the windows. The. Decoration up top, you know, things that. Could be different.
I agree. Um, I, I, I think at least.
I don't think you need to do a full sided, but.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a single panel front, front elevation would be good.
I think that'd be nice.
The, the roof, the overhang, one window, some brick underneath and maybe a piece of the. Garage screen. Right?
Yeah.
The Christmas tree.
Maybe a good chance to see if they will powder coat the custom color that you're looking forward to.
Yeah.
Make sure it matches, Greg.
Yep.
Andrew, can you do a? Can you do a spec on the uh, mockup?
Sure.
That way we can just put it on the plan. I know Jim McMahon used to like that. That way the board knows what they're gonna get on the mockup and there's no confusion.
Yeah.
That way we'll just spec a chip as part of the uh, as part of the plan.
Yeah, doesn't need to be conditioned just on the plan.
Yeah.
Less conditions, the better.
And the eleven units, Brian, that, what's that net for affordability?
Two.
Two. Okay.
Okay. I think I got the list of what everyone said. I'm sure Brian does too.
You too, yep.
Uh, any other comments, questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I agree that I think the building looks good in the addition of the lower level and the screens um. Balances it nicely.
All right, thank you. All right, Brian, just thinking about the date, are you gonna be able to pull it all this together and are you actually gonna wanna be on the January eights?
No, no. No, you guys are gonna have the hands full.
What do Brian think about?
We're gonna need the time anyways because we've got the holidays and people are getting taken time off and, and. Um, and then you have to get it into Friday before, so you know, that means we're gonna have to submit it on what the, you know, the second of January.
Yeah.
So, um, no, we wanna do this right and maybe, maybe if we, if we do do it right, we can possibly, um, you know, our goal, our goal, and you know, that's for you to decide would be potentially to close it that night. If we, you know, I think that extra time will help us, help us maybe get to that goal.
On the twenty second?
Yes.
Yeah, there, there's a finite amount of stuff, uh, I agree, so work hard to put that package together and.
Send it around as early as you have it.
Yep.
All right.
One, one other thing we wanna think about the, 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 the school nearby, so we might wanna think about delivery times and all that.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you the, I'm gonna give you draft conditions, Bill, and I'll include that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, good point. Uh, we missed that one. Thanks, Joe, and. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna open it up to the public for public comment. Hearing seeing none. There's a member of the public that's here to testify regarding this case and the, the material that was presented this evening. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Going once. Going twice. They're closing the public comment. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Mister Chairman, I move that we continue this hearing until January twenty second. Twenty twenty five.
Seconded.
It's such a scary thing.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded. Um. Greg, you can uh, help us with a vote on this one. So, uh, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
I vote yes. Matters continue to the twenty fifth. All right, moving to the next item, new hearings, cases twenty five, twenty three, twenty five, twenty four, seven, Woodya Road.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail representing Robert uh, O'Neill. Uh, the owner of uh, seventy Woodya Road. Uh, Bob, uh, Rob is with me tonight on the screen and his daughter Erin is on here also. Um, what is being proposed is in addition to a single family dwelling. Uh, in the request of relief from the board is a finding under one ninety fifty A in a variance um. Under one ninety sixty six from the requirements of Article Six, uh, Table Two. Um, the O'Neills have been um, longstanding residents of the town of Wakefield. Um, they faced some, some recent challenges and some older challenges in their, in their, in their family history. Um, unfortunately, Erin was diagnosed with a um, neurological degenerative disorder called Friedrich's ataxia, which is. A pretty rare, um, rare disorder that has affected her, that um, she needs assistance from a wheelchair. Um, and it was compounded by the fact that uh, her mom and Bob's wife, uh, Mary passed away in June. So Erin has been living on her own and now um, with the family uh, dynamic, it is her goal to move home uh, with her dad. On Woodya Row where she grew up, uh, she's forty four years, years old and graduate of Wakefield High School. And so uh, they wanna live together, so uh, to do so, uh, they're seeking to do in addition to the single family home. To allow some modifications uh, to the house for uh, accessibility, uh, et cetera. So, um, with that said, if I can share my screen, I'd like to show you um, what they're proposing. Um.
Thanks too.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna start with the architectural drawings because it will give you an idea of um. How they want the layout to work. So this is a ranch on Woodya Road, uh, pretty straightforward house. This is the existing conditions. Um, and as I go down, you'll see, go back and forth. Uh, what they're doing is they're looking to put in addition on to the left-hand side, as you've faced it from Woodya Road. Uh, for Erin uh, to be able to have some accessibility. It'll be an exit handicap accessible bathroom. Um, and um, assistance room and a bedroom uh, that will, will connect to the house. It's nineteen by twenty six by twenty. And that's it. Um, this is kind of the elevation, how it will show being added on. Um. And pretty straightforward, so uh, with that said, I'm gonna share the site plan to show the unique circumstances as it pertains to this property. So this is um, you know, uh, compounded with the family hardship, um, there certainly are unique circumstances here, um. As far as the, uh, as far as the property goes, which, which is a requirement of variance. Um, and unique circumstances here are the shape of the lot, um, which are quite evident just looking at it. This lot does not have a real outline. It has a front and two sides, which is really limited. Uh, in a long curve. So, um, what we're, if you look at the, uh, this is the proposed addition. Um, and um. Going to the zoning table, um, it's deficient on lot area twelve thousand required at eleven two eighty six, that's not changing. Frontage, it complies, it has that long frontage and one Woodya Road, one hundred requirement required in one sixty six point thirty three is what's there. And what would be proposed. The front setback is the first variance that we need here. The required is twenty, the existing is twenty seven point eight. You can see it right here, that tie line. And it's going to seventeen point seven for the addition.
Brian, can I just stop you for a second? Mister Chair, is anybody else hearing the feedback that I'm getting? Yes. It just went away. Okay. Thank you.
Can I, should I go back, Chip, or are you okay where I was? Okay, so um, so that's the uh, front setback. Uh, and then we move to uh, side on the left-hand side, fifteen is required. It's currently fifteen point nine. That's the closest point. The addition is gonna go to thirteen. So there's a need for, for a front setback variance and a side setback variance for the addition. Uh, the rear, there is no rear, so it's not applicable. Uh, the right side uh, doesn't change. It remains compliant at twenty eight. Uh, this is well within the height limit as a ranch, thirty feet, well below that. Lot coverage is in compliance at twenty, even though it increases, open spaces in compliance at seventy four. And front yard open spaces and requirement at seventy seven, sixty is required. Um, so that is um. Um. Um, kind of lays out the lot and tells you that the, the relief uh, that we're, we're seeking. Uh, I also thought it would be helpful um, to share. This is.
Brian, can you just go back and? Define the finding? I understand the variance.
Yep. It's really the lot area, Chip.
Finding is just lot area?
That's the only deficiency, the only covering. I'll go back to that in a minute, but.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so this is the lot that I'm highlighting. Um, you can see on the curve, the unique shape and how it fits in. Um, I did uh, send in um, a neighborhood neighbor support letter. There is big support in the neighborhood for the family. They've been there for quite some time, as I've mentioned. Uh, Erin grew up there. She's forty four years old, so Bob and Mary were there for quite some time. And are pretty well entrenched in the neighborhood. Um, so the support that we have submitted, I think most importantly, the folks at sixty four. Uh, next door would, would be most impacted by this, uh, have sub- have submitted a written support. Um, the folks at uh, seventy five across the street have also supported. Um, the folks at sixty four, um, which I've mentioned. Uh, seventy one. Um, which is right here. Seventy one's here. And also uh, sixty seven um, has also supported. Um, and I gotta track them down here. They're a little bit further away. But really, I mean, the only ones that would be impacted here are sixty four, seventy one and seventy five, and they've all supported. And this um, this will kind of show you that um, notwithstanding. I went to the wrong, I gotta go back. Not a second. It's a part of the easiest way to do it. So if we switch around. Hang on, I got lost here. Just gotta restart it. So this is, this is the uh, subject property. And you can see it's really not gonna have any impact on it, even though they support it, it's really not gonna have any impact anyway. Because this is the area right here where the addition's gonna go and, and this is a neighbor's garage. As you can see. And it's, there's a, there's quite a buffer here. So in any event, this is kind of where it goes. It's really not a lot of impact uh, to the neighborhood. So I would, I would uh, profit to the board that, you know, as far as the, the standards of the variance go. Uh, there's certainly unique circumstances uh, with the lot. Uh, there is a hardship, there's some family hardship going on here, need for the family to grow and adapt to the challenges that they're facing. Um, and as far as, you know, impact on the neighborhood, um, you know, they support it, so I don't see any. Um, major impact on the um. On the neighborhood. As far as uh, the finding goes, I would respectfully suggest that there is no intensification of, of any existing non-conformity here. Under the first prong. But even if one to, were fined that there were, uh, it's certainly not substantially more detrimental. Um. To the neighborhood. So with that said, Mister Chair, we're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Just before, as board members are thinking if they have any questions, you know, I got some correspondence from uh, town departments, first one day, December sixth from. Uh, Chief Michael Sullivan of Wakefield Fire Department. They have reviewed the application. The department has no objection regarding this project. A correspondence from uh. Department of Public Works, from one of their civil engineers. They've reviewed the, the project. Their only comment is um. The applicant must submit the sewer I N I fee to compensate. Um, which is four hundred fifty dollars. Otherwise, they have no issues with the project. Correspondence from the conservation a- uh, agent, uh, Conservation Commission has reviewed. The application, it's not within the physical jurisdiction, so uh, and no filing with the commission would be required. Still clean as far as the town department's. Rubbing the board, questions, comments?
Yeah, Mister Chair, I have no problem with this. I think um, it screams. Um, variance, it's one of the. Better projects, um. That's not gonna hurt the neighborhood. Uh, as far as, I don't think anyone's gonna be on here to, hey, the neighbors are gonna dispute it, but if they are, um, I'll let them speak, but. I have no problems with it.
Thanks, Joe. Sounds. Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't have any issues here at all. In fact, I think we should be very positive about doing this for this family, so. Um. Anything else?
No, 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 right.
Okay. I do have in the, I do uh, to verify Mister McGrail's thing, I have in the file, the, the letters of support from. From all of those abutters that he went over, um, so that is in the file. And with that, I will at this time open it up to the public. Uh, if there are members of public here who wishes to speak on this application. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Going once. Twice. Public comment is closed. Back to the board. Pleasure of the board.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion for the finding and then for the variance. I don't think the order particularly matters. So I move based upon what we saw this evening in a site plan. That uh. I move that we grant or that we find. That there is no uh. Increase. To the non-conformity. And even if one were to find that there is an increase, that it would be non-detrimental to the neighborhood.
Seconded.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Right, regular voting members in Kirsten. Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Matter's unanimous.
Mister Chairman, I move that we grant the variance as presented to us this evening. Um, for the side yard and front yard setbacks. As presented in the site plan.
Seconded.
Your motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Same voting members, Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is. Unanimous. Good luck to the O'Neills with the building. On to other matters.
Thank you very much on that. Appreciate it.
Yep. Two hundred corner power parkway. Uh, back with the signage.
We're back, yep. So, uh, Marissa Gallo is here, will be tonight on the signage. Uh, we submitted, uh, we, as you know, we met on the signage, so there's. There's really three things that we wanted to talk to you about. We submitted a revised signage package to you. Um, which is not dissimilar to what you already had. Um, there were a couple of changes that you were requested that we put in. Uh, most importantly, you were requested that we meet with the public safety departments. To make sure that they were okay with the way we were identifying. Um, we did have a meeting, a detailed meeting with Chief Scory, the police chief. Um, uh, Fire Chief Sullivan and Deputy Fire Chief Purcell. We met with all of them at the same time. Um, they were very pleased with the signage. Um, they were satisfied with it. The only uh, issue that they had is a couple of the building numbers. Um, were white on one of the buildings and they thought that blended in a little bit too much, so they, they, they said we might want you to change that to be black. Um, we said we would work with them on that. Um, so they had no issues. The other um. Issue that the board had talked about was whether the flagpoles, if, if you will. Um, that identified, um, you know, kind of walking areas if they were. um, that identified, um, you know, kind of walking areas, if they were compliant, um, with a concern that people could walk into them. And Marissa confirmed with our, um, co-consultant that they are a distance away from accessible path areas, that they are not a problem. Uh, and they are, um, they are compliant, so that we did confirm that. Um, we're happy to go through all of them again. Um, that's up to you, Mr. Chair, but I don't wanna waste the board's time. That's your prerogative on, on that.
Pleasure, board here. I, my, my, I was on the train of make sure that the public safety officials were on board, but I don't wanna cut anyone off if they wanna, uh, full presentation, so.
Don't, don't think I need a full presentation, Mr. Chair, but I have a question, and it's, we often ask, uh, somebody to go back and check with engineering and are they okay, or check with the police chief, and is he okay? Other, and I trust Mr. McGrail a hundred percent. But other than Mr. McGrail saying they were all fine with it, what do we have that, can we ask them in the future, not necessarily now, to just drop us a note that says, hey, we met and we're good with everything that was discussed?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it doesn't have to be for this.
Right.
I think in the future, we should have some record, other than the very trustworthy Mr. McGrail, that the meeting actually took place and everybody's okay with it, because it happens with engineering. It happens numerous times on some projects. Particularly with this size project. You know, we don't need to be, like you said, public safety was key to have them in, in the loop. But we should hear from them that they were in the loop and fine with everything.
No, I agree. That's why when Mr. Sparagis made his presentation on thirty-two, I was like, that's great that this is your opinion, but I wanna hear from DPW.
Oh, correct, and, and, you know, and for them to say, oh, we don't think it's necessary. But I, let's not go there. Um.
Yeah. No, well, I'll, I'll talk to Gail and Ben about, and Brian about some form or something. I don't know. Um, I don't wanna.
It could be a phone call to you from, from somebody that says, hey, we met and everything's good.
I think, I think the point is fair, um, uh, and well taken, so, um, I didn't think, in this context, I thought it was more just, hey, meet with the chiefs to make sure they're okay, uh, but.
Which is what, which is what it was, Brian, and, and.
Yeah, but I do.
When you say we did and it is, you would, you have far too much to risk to jeopardize that.
Yeah, but, but I understand. So, and this one, I think what, what I could do, and I think they will be fine with it, if it's okay with the chair, um, I'll send an email to the chiefs, a copy, uh, Tom and Gail, and just with the, you know, attaching the sign plans and just asking them to just respond for the file that confirmed they were fine with the signage.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, and then you have an email for the file.
Simple and perfect.
Yeah.
You don't even have to type, yeah, all set and good.
So that point's well taken, and we can address that. Yeah, and then that kind of parlay's into the, um, the, uh, community space, because that's something that needs, needs to be approved, and we, we've given you that plan. We also went over that with them, um, on, because part of that area is the, is the public safety, um, office.
Yeah.
And they're very happy with that. Uh, Chief Scory is thrilled with where it is. It's, it, it's attached to, um, and I'm gonna share this to kind of show you, um, what he liked about it. And we can, we can, we can kind of include this in the email to them too. Um,
Brian, what's worth, I believe you.
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate that.
Yeah. I don't have longer.
Um, so this is, this is, um, this is the community space, and the, over here is, is the community outdoor area. So this is, this vestibule is where people will access. And this is the public safety office. So they have two ways to cut, to get to their public safety office. They can come in from the path on the lake, because that's down here, and they can access their public safety office, or they can come through the community center. Uh, one thing that we discussed with them, one of our parking spaces out here in the middle roadway that goes between the buildings, we're gonna designate that for Wakefield Public Safety One Space. So that way, if the police or fire need to come here, uh, to do something, if they wanna utilize their office, they're not gonna have to drive around looking for a parking space. They'll be able to park right outside where they're gonna be. Um, and the other comment that, uh, that the chief had was that he wanted to make sure that they would have access cards to get in at all times. Uh, and one of the things that he wanted was, um, he wants the community area. And when we do our O and M, we can finalize this with you. He wants us to be, um, closed up at some point during the night. He doesn't want it being left open twenty-four seven.
Makes sense.
He said it's gonna, he said from a police perspective, it's gonna be a problem if people could, he said people be sleeping in here. So, um, especially with the bathrooms. He's concerned with vandalism. Um, and then, um, we also talked about our signage, our directional signage. Um, you know, because we had had public safety office, we talked about that. And his prerogative is to reference it as Wakefield Police. He wants that on the signage, um, throughout the, uh, direction, because he wants people to know that there is a Wakefield Police substation here. He thinks it's a safety factor for people walking the lake, that, you know, anyone that is gonna, um, you know, be, uh, you know, uh, looking to get in trouble or looking to, um, cause harm to people. They're gonna see by signs that, uh-oh, there's actually a Wakefield Police Station on this side of the lake.
Hey, in, in reference to that, Brian, can there be a phone or something there that can direct access to dispatch? If they just pick it up?
Um, we, he, we're, we're talking to him on that. We gave him the specs. We're gonna deliver this as a warm shell to him, which he was ecstatic about. He's got furniture. It's also gonna be, um, it's also gonna be completely wired, um, for, you know, their internet and their connection service. So if they wanna do that, that's something that they could do.
Well, I'm just thinking, do we want to do that on the outside, so that if somebody comes to, you know, if you're gonna label it police?
Yeah.
And somebody has a concern and comes to the office and it's not manned, that somebody could put up a phone that just goes to police? And just goes like you do on the outside at dispatch?
I don't think that will be a problem. I mean, I think.
I think it would be a good thing, and I'm sure you'll have cameras as well, so.
Well, thank you for mentioning that, because that was the other thing that he wanted. He wanted to make sure that this whole area, community area, was gonna be cambered in, and it is extensively. We talked to him about that.
And of course, he'd have access to that.
He's gonna have access to everything. Yeah. Yeah.
And there was a comment made at our last meeting that the size of the office wasn't big enough? That, was that a concern at all?
No, we gave him the specs on the size. He thought it was fine.
Okay.
Yeah. So it was a great meeting. They're, they're extremely happy with what, what's, what, what's, uh, happening here.
Out of a curiosity, Brian, is there a bike rack any near any one of these openings? Because I kind of picture that the police might be on bike at some point.
Marissa, can you hop in on that?
Um, so there will be bike racks at Building Three, which is across the way, um, but I don't believe that there's any, like, within this courtyard area. Um, so.
I'm just wondering if there could be something by the side door.
Uh, like at this, um, planned self.
Yeah.
Location. Um, yeah, we can look into that.
Because I think, from what I've heard is, you know, they're gonna be on bike patrol often.
Okay, that makes sense.
If they slide, you know, it needs to be one of those one hoops or two hoops that they can just slide in, drop their bike and go.
Yeah, I think that that's something we could do. I, I, I don't see why not. We have a lot of bike storage on the property as it is, so, um, that's something that we could probably find a spot for within that area, so.
You have a bike repair area, Marissa, don't you also?
We do. It's, it's part of the building, the larger Building Three, which is, um, on the ninety-five side, so it's across the street, but, um, we can look into putting something like between Buildings One and Two for access to, I mean, residents obviously, as well as public safety, and then anyone in the community that would wanna kind of hook up to it, so I can make notes.
Thinking right now, this backside door so that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked to the police.
He's got his spot to slide at when he goes into the office.
We talked to the chief that his bike patrol people will have access to the bike repair area too.
Yes.
If they're, if they're at the, if they're at the head of the lake and have a problem with a flat tire or something, they'll be able to get in to service their bike.
Great, yeah, we can, um, we can definitely do that.
So that was, so, and, and so I can incorporate him on the email with this, Chip, on this, so you guys see that too as well, that he's reviewed it. Um, and, um, and, you know, the other thing I wanted to mention before I forget, Joe, um, Joe Pride, you know, I'm sure you can pipe in, but we, we had Joe review the mock-up panel and, um, the mock-up building. I think Joe wants the mock-up building for his backyard.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I had to stand in line, because I think there's like five other people that want that. Um, but, yeah, it was, it was great. I couldn't believe the detail they put into it. They poured a slab. They even did the inside, which I couldn't believe. They had a water heater in there. They had the drywall windows all, all done, detailed up. Um, the outside was perfect. Uh, I think there was a couple pieces of metal that weren't on, but they were on site, so. Um, yeah, I gave Brian the thumbs up and CCNF the thumbs up, so looked good to me. Better than I did on North Ave. So.
So that's that. Um, and, um, the only other thing we, we did wanna talk to you about, uh, tonight is the, um, is the banner, um, for temporary banner for leasing.
Yeah, we had talked about time periods.
Yeah, so I wanna show you, they came up with that, with kind of a final design on this, um, and I submitted that. So this is where it would be, um, on the garage facing one twenty-eight. And what they're proposing is, this is how it will be mounted. So the size of it is, uh, roughly sixty-nine by thirty-three feet, five inches. It's a digital printed, the heavy metal, heavy-duty mesh banner. And it just shows how it will be mounted. So it's a really, you know, good-looking banner. They, they only, they're only looking for one, correct, Marissa?
Yes, just one.
And, and they're not gonna need it now. They don't need it now, but they're thinking that they would wanna put it up sometime in the summer. You know, sometime in June or July, uh, as they're getting ready to lease up. Um, and, you know, they're happy to, um, you know, our thought would be that we would just, you know, get a certain period of time that we could do it. And then after that period of time, we will, we will report back to the board where we stood on the initial lease up. And if needed, request the board to extend it for periods that we would continue to come back and let you know where we are.
Brian, will you need a variance for that? Because there, there is a time period in our signed bylaw that they can stay up.
Yeah, but you've reserved all signage on this site over your special permit.
Okay, alright.
All right, can you put the sign up real quick?
And that's what's, there's no telephone number, no nothing?
No, that is as it's going to read, um.
People will Google.
Does it have to say, does, does it have to say brand new apartments? I mean, is that, I mean, I guess I'm getting nitpicky here, but.
Um, that was, that was like per our marketing team. Um, they kind of do a lot of analysis on that, that I can't really speak to. Um, they went back and forth on a lot of different verbiage, but that was what they landed on, so, um, I don't, we can look into it if that's something that you guys.
I mean, I guess if I'm the only one that's sticking on about it, it just seems, I don't know, the basin seems, oh, just enough that now leasing seems fine, but the brand new apartments is starting to get a little wordy, but I don't know, maybe I'm just getting up into the weeds.
I think the concern is, Joe, people driving a one twenty-eight might think it's an office building, you know, they don't know.
Yeah, that's true. I guess.
Especially with the parking garage.
Yeah.
Renting.
I have no, I have no problem with, I just, I, I do think having brand new is even just a new apartment is kind of funny, just whatever.
So we're gonna get a start period at a time, so.
So are you looking for, uh, us to put out a time period, Brian?
Yeah.
Like two months, sixty days, ninety days? I don't know what the board's thinking. Um, with a, with, with a kickoff, you know, somewhere around July first?
Yeah, and then whenever that kickoff is, it would just be six months from whenever they, you know, so they wouldn't have to put it up by a certain date. They could put it up whenever they want, but then it's gonna start. We will report when it goes up, and that's what's gonna trigger the six-month period. We would, we would ask for six months to start. It's gonna take that long. And may, and probably longer.
Would you take down the Callahan sign once that goes up?
Yes, I think that's been down for a little while now. Is it?
I think I started, I drove by it the other day. It's back up.
Okay, yeah, they will be removing that. Um, hopefully soon.
They've been, they've, they've pushed the limit on that.
Hopefully it blew down today.
Yeah.
No, they'll staple it back up, I'm sure.
All right, are, are, are folks okay with the six months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would wanna say that it's, I have no issue that CCNF is gonna keep it in perfect condition. But if it gets torn, if it gets tattered, if it gets anything looking worn, that a new one goes back up. Like if we call and say, the sign looks like hell, they gotta do something about it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sure they're gonna do it anyway, but.
The one on, the, the one on Foundry's feet looks horrible.
Yeah, and they, they're still.
Which one's that, Mickey?
Um, the, the new, uh, almost finished apartments, um.
The rent is.
Henley, the Henley, whatever.
Renley, yeah. What is it? The advertising for the rental?
Yeah, it's always flopping and it just doesn't look good.
I'll, I'll be on the phone with him tomorrow morning.
Doesn't help them.
Thank you.
Was there a warranty period provided by the sign company? Like, would they give you, would they say they would replace it within six months, or would they say it would last longer than three months, something like that?
Um, yeah, the, the wear and tear on it, though, with the wind, they couldn't really give us a, a timeline of like a realistic timeline of how long it would last. We would expect it to last at least a few months, depending on like, obviously the storms in the season. But we would anticipate probably having to replace it at least once within the six-month timeframe. Um, depending on like the weather. Obviously, I think the summer will do a little bit better than in the winter, but, um, can't really predict that. I think with the material, we would expect it to last six months, but like I said, um, depending on storm and wind, we would anticipate probably at least replacing it once.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, board members? I don't think we need to vote here, Brian. I think.
Yeah, I mean, what I can do is I'll just send the correspondents confirming that, you know, Joe has signed off on the, uh, mock-up panel, because we're checking our boxes for the conditions. And that the signs, uh, have been approved, Mr. Chair, which, you know, we'll attach the sign plan. We'll get the email from the chiefs. Uh, and the common area has been approved, um, and then the banner. So just if, if, you know, maybe I can just prepare a lot of.
But just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. You don't think we need a vote approving the sign package?
I'm open to it, Chip.
I think we do, probably. Um, because we retain jurisdiction, so I would make a motion that we approve the sign packages presented, uh, and allow you to put it in the file as approved, based upon the email you get from Brian, uh, confirming the discussion with the chiefs.
Yep. Now, Brian, just put the six mo, put the six-month period in the letter as well, please.
Just a point of alarm on that, Chip, if you can include the common area too.
And, and that we reviewed the police office and common area, uh, as well, and that that's, I move that we approve that space as well as presented this evening.
I'll, uh, second Chip's motion.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. We'll go regular voting members and Greg, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. Right, all right, no, you're right, Chip. We should probably be a little more formal with that, so now we have it, uh, papered.
And I'll do a letter, Mr. Chair, and Marissa, you gonna look into the bike rack?
Yes, I will. I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
And, um.
We don't want to hold that final occupancy.
Yeah, we are gonna, we are gonna come back, just as a reminder, we're gonna have some off-site signage that we have to deal with, and we're gonna deal with that separately. Yeah, and we'll be back on the restaurant signage too, when that gets, um, when that gets finalized.
Great.
Great. That sounds closer. Any, any, any thoughts there on the restaurant? Any movement?
Nothing yet. We've seen a bunch of different vendors, so we're hoping within the next uh, few months, we'll have someone locked in.
Well, um, Mr. Chair, just to remind, you know, you had a lot going on today. Um, we got a late letter from uh, Aaron Kokinder on the shuttle.
You know, I meant to do uh, I had that right at the top of the file here. Um, did that go, Gail, did that go to everybody?
Yes. Yeah, I, we got it. I'm, I'm confused as to why she thinks we need to change our. The wording in our. Decision. I mean, it doesn't seem like what she's proposing is much different than what we set out to do.
Would she propose a change in the, in the condition?
She says I would, i- if you go down to um. If you put it back up, I'll.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it right back up. Go ahead, Chip.
Uh.
Oh, the final certificate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's like.
Well, I think, I think what.
I, I think she's doing a good thing, but.
Yeah, uh, Marissa, do you have any insight on this? Cause you've had some discussions with Aaron.
I do. Um, we've been working closely with Aaron to finalize that shuttle plan, and I think from the town's perspective and her perspective. Um, we can provide them with that plan, but I think that her intent was to build upon that and kind of. I know she's been looking into different programs that surrounding towns have been implementing on expanding that program. So she did not wanna like prematurely approve a plan um, at our first TCO, which would be um, this fall. When she wanted a little bit more time to kind of rework and see what they could do to take our plan. And then incorporate other businesses, um, potentially expanding upon that to mimic something like Stonem. So I think she was hoping for some more time on her end to be able to, like I said, expand upon um, what we're providing in our plan.
Which is fine, but she doesn't approve it. We do. I think, I mean.
Yeah, I think, I think, Chip, I think your condition designated her.
Did it?
I believe it did, yeah. Or the town administrator designate.
Well, then she can determine when she wants to approve it, whenever she.
Well, but I think your, your decision said it had to be uh, by the first uh, certificate of occupancy, so you you put it, you put it there. Um, and she's saying she needs more time because there's been, there's been.
I would agree. I would agree. I mean, I, I think it's a thing of motion. Did we, okay, so.
What I can do um.
I mean, I think this is pretty minor, so if that's something, Mr. Chair, that you think we should act upon, I can make a motion.
Yeah, I think we should be supporting the the town employees trying to pull this together.
Yeah, I just, I just thought we would have a shot at. I thought since it was one of our conditions, but I guess it's a condition we kind of turned over. Just as the dollars to the sewer or whatever. We don't really get into the nitpicking. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move upon Aaron Kokinda's letter to change the wording in our decision. And see that adding the word final is a minor modification to our.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. We'll do regular voting members and Kirsten. Uh, any questions or comments before we go to a vote? Seeing hearing none, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Great, thank you. And Marissa, you saw that she wants you to make sure that you're, we're, we're gonna take more time, that the prospective tenants know it might not be right away, right?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll incorporate that in the letter too, Mr. Chair, just so it's documented.
Yep, just so we have some for the file.
Yep.
All right. Is that it on 200?
I think so. I think we got everything, right, Marissa?
Yep, all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to clerk board comments.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, we met with the bylaw review committee, met with the planning board last night to go over the sixth uh, draft of the recertification. So um, nothing new. I mean, you can watch the video. It was till about 10:30. We didn't get very far. We got hung up on all the uh, use regulations. Um, drive-through childcare was a couple of things. The uh, creative development overlay district, that's really not a overlay district yet. Uh, and a couple of new things like breweries, distilleries added. Um. But um. I guess we're gonna be meeting next month to go over.
Yeah, the, the, they've suggested January 13th, which I thought was gonna be fine, because what I'd like to do. Rather than, you know, having a big picture, look at everything, I wanted the board to be able to read um. Read what, what's down it, what you've put together so far, Joe, with that committee. Discuss it on, I thought we were gonna discuss on January 8th, but now I'm a little hesitant uh, to throw it on the 8th agenda. Um, but we could still try, you know, we could put it on there and see what we can do. Cause I'd rather go in with pointed comments to the bylaw committee as opposed to trying to wrestle with the whole thing, so um.
I thought we were doing, I thought when we met, we were gonna concentrate on the. The zoning board, that is, with that, at the set, that January meeting was that performance standard that was added. But if it's something that you wanna, if, are we going over the whole recertified zoning? Cause like I said, we were there till 10:30. We didn't get very far, so um.
Well, take your advice. I've read through, I just, I have some comments.
Yeah.
I have a lot of comments. Some of them very minor, but some of them bigger. Um.
Yeah.
And so I thought.
Mr. Chairman, how much more stuff do you think we're gonna have on the 8th other than the 40Bs? There we go.
The person. Yeah, I'm getting to pack it up.
Salem Street.
Yep.
The project on Salem Street.
The townhouses.
Yep, the townhouses. Um.
Probably, that probably just, that probably will get continued.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's really it.
All right, so maybe we do get time.
I don't think the 40Bs, I mean. I think there's gonna be some talking, but there's no input.
Yeah, I don't, I agree with you, Chip. I think it's gonna go quick, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I, we'll have to see, Joe.
Uh, yeah, so, okay, you're probably, you're probably right. We probably have time on the 8th. So I'll, I'll ask everyone, especially, you know, read what you can, especially as it relates to, you know, the performance standards. And um, you know, they wanted to take, you know, um, site plan review away. So there's a couple of things in there if you can scan it. Um.
I, I, I don't think we're gonna do that. He mentioned it, cause he, Bobowski mentioned it because a lot of towns do it, but. I think we put the cob wash on that, so he was fine with it either way.
I think the planning board wanted it, did they?
Yeah.
What's that?
The planning board wanted it. The planning board wanted it.
Oh, I don't know. I think, I don't know how that worked, but.
Right, it could have just been his idea.
It was just his idea.
Those were the two I put in the letter, so I at least wanted to get to those and try to see if we have consensus on our board to, to share with them.
The, the other thing that was brought up by Sam from the uh, senior planner. That was tabled was the sign signage that's getting, you know, Brian can, I guess, weigh in on this too, but. How we have no more, you know, we have no more Jim and Bane and that whole thing got dissolved. The bylaw review committee, uh, the signed by law review committee, so. We didn't really get into that, but I guess it's causing a problem on Brian's end, I guess, right?
Yeah, cause there's supposed to be a review from a committee. I mean, there should be a committee reformed.
So what, so what did, what happened? I guess, did Jim leave and that's just it? That's just, it just exploded and blew up? No one else jumped in?
Yeah, a department.
The whole, the whole department got dissolved?
No, it's falling on the building department now and Ben's discretion.
Yeah. Larry and Ben this morning and he was sending the same thing. So, is it on the, is it on the purview of the, of the town to start to bring that back, to get another gem in here, or is it just? You know? Are we gonna try to get more members? Are we gonna put something out in the paper to try to bring that back or no?
Let me, let me ask around, let, I, let me ask Joe.
I think, I think, I think, Joe, what Samantha was saying, the, the senior planner is. Her goal is to, is to, is to simp, is to keep it in the context of, of tasteful signage, but to simplify the bylaw in the process. To simplify it for the building department and to simplify it for the Board of Appeals and not having the necessity of a, of a design review board, so.
Brian, where do we sta- where do we stand with the. Revised signed by law that we did five years ago?
It never got anywhere, Chip.
It never, right, it got stopped at.
It just. It just, the wheel spun and nothing ever happened.
But we finished it.
No.
No, COVID came and that was the end of that.
They had a committee. Brian Fabi was on it for a while. Jim was on it and.
Oh, it's Jim, Brian and I.
Yeah, but, but it never got finished. It then.
Oh, I don't, it got very close to finished.
Well, in any event, I mean, you know, the senior planner wants to do a draft of a, of a, you know, the point is that bylaw is ominous. It's really difficult to handle for the building department. It creates a lot of confusion with, with businesses trying to go into the, into downtown. And she thinks that she can simplify it and make it better. And, and the point is, if that's gonna happen, now's the time to do it during the recertification. We don't wanna recertify our bylaw and then be amending it three weeks later. So that, that was, that was her point. Um, which, you know. I don't think it's, I think it's a good point. I, I think it, it should be looked at at least at this point.
Oh, absolutely. And she's willing to take that on?
Yeah, she's already got a draft that, you know, that she's working on.
Well, I think, Mr. Lucy, this chair, that maybe we should ask her to come, tell us what she's doing.
Yep. It would be good to have some clarity though, because we spin our wheels way too much on some of these signs too.
Oh, it should be easy. Yeah, and it's not.
All right, thanks, Joe. Thanks for all the work you're doing there, Joe.
Thank you.
Anybody else with uh, board comments, anything?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, we'll pick a, uh, try to pick a day in um, in January for a holiday. Get together. Um.
I was gonna say the 13th, but I thought that day may be full.
Let's get out early.
I doubt it. All right, and I do have an announcement to make. I, I have read the September 5th board meeting.
Yay.
I move that we approve the September 5th, 2021, I mean, 2020. Excuse me, I mean, 2020 board meeting minutes as written.
And read, thank, uh, seconded.
I would just add to this, uh, I'll amend it and add the November 20th minutes if people already approved those too.
We'll add right, right onto this, yeah.
Second the amended motion.
All right, oh, we need the voice vote here, all in favor?
Yeah.
I.
Any names? Okay, and a um, motion to adjourn? With the Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Everybody has a merry, merry Christmas.
Same.
Happy New Year. See you next year.
Best to everybody.
Merry Christmas. Bye-bye.